Public City of Kewaunee Common Council Meeting for Monday, November fourteenth to order. Let the record show all members are present with the exception of Brown excused and Wes Nicky should be arriving shortly. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of meditation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States, fair and due report. Stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approval of minutes, regular common council meeting of October tenth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have a motion to approve? Second? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Item four, public comment communications. Does anyone wish to speak before the council this evening? Please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes per person. Anyone wish to speak to the council?
I'm ready, Paul. My request is that you enter these questions to be answered relating to discussion nine. Oh, I'm sorry. My address is ten twenty-three seventeen St. Henry forty-two.
Anyone else wish to speak before the council this evening, please?
Hi, I'm Beth Mello. I live in Catsburg, D two six nine seven Rockland Road, Catsburg. And I also would like these questions to be answered relating to discussion eight, my name.
How are you doing? I'm Jason Delick. My address is eleven North Street. Actually, I want to talk about a couple of things that are on your agenda. Big elephant in the room that I saw there was contractor. Some of the language that I see in the reports, more like opinions rather than actual documentation of the thing. Mr. Davis, he gave us that contract at the time because he wanted to make sure that the city continued to have services in that capacity. It gave us the discounted rate. Time to be able to decide whether they want to fill that position again or go to contractual. Eventually go contractual. One of the things that I didn't quite understand is that. No motion ever needed to do that. Needed an aftermath to then somehow decide that now we should be paid for services. Another thing that I saw was the cemetery software, which already has software for us, but I'm not sure why you won't spend money getting new software. I was also concerned about using our funds for that lateral, because there are multiple different avenues of grant funding out there specifically aimed at that lateral. So my opinion would be that if you're going to use our funds for that lateral, you're basically hurting that. That doesn't need to happen. And in reference to the inspector's position, I would also be curious if the inspector that's supposed to meet in terms of stated in your agenda package. You're trying to expect from this to be a street. Inspector stated very clearly that he would not enforce any kind of violation. Where has that responsibility fallen? Takes care of that because there's a property that has been blocked from their home that is not livable. That has been rented once, the people left the condition was bad. Nobody's looking at what's happening with it. Signing that it's on that house does not mean any kind of specific contractor. The real reason that prompted me to be here is because I'm sure that in the community. They come up to me and express their desire to see people as well, just to help engage tax burden on people, so we give them more choices. And I think that that is very important, and we try to nurture, kind of develop. Our piece of the property has been multiple times in the past, it never gets. A multitude of responses that come in do not really meet any of the things that the city is looking for. When I say the city, I'm talking about what we do, widespread, pushing narrative for the community to tell us what they want. And those are two causes that not get. Kathy has shown very good faith and work with the city. And I think that if we're not having a good plan of communication, just as an example.
You have four minutes to listen. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the city tonight in our public comment?
Phil Melvin, twenty-fourth Lane Street. I too would like these line questions addressed during your discussion of your project. One important thing I think the other is the conflict of interest. Another issue I might be trying to be brought up as well, cemetery software program. Again, we have one. We have one that is far more in depth than when we were offering. It has far more capabilities for search potential. The one that said that has two ways of searching that. For the deceased's name. Our program has eleven different ways of searching. My question to it is, who writes the narrative of this? It says staff. This alternative is attractive. Training will be four hours, training with the old program that's literally. I've never heard any issue from staff that use the program. I'm also with the understanding that this. Whole program is not ready to be put on our city website, so anybody can use it. The current one we have just has to be launched, ready to go. It's taken a long time to fulfill. But I notice. I'm looking at paying twenty-five hundred dollars a front of this plus five hundred fifty per year for support. I got that number off workforce's website. That's here. Oh, furthermore, record keeping is typically a current sector except that we have not been kept informed of records maintenance or any issues. Has the cemetery section asked anybody for information? But I've looked through my phone records, I had one. Originally accepted and standing here, you're. With authorization included, no compensation for services, obviously donated. No identification of persons requiring access to the city's computer network or permissions for such access. That was very, very short, just to volunteer to fill that database with all the names. They were known as the staff. Free, no contractual terms, and we want the contract term or liability. Kind of hard to have a length of term of fact that it doesn't exist.
Your oldest reminiscent.
If there's me, the only reason why I did it was to give my name.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Well, let me just brush. Well, look at one zero zero nine Scott Street. Comes to agenda item seven, quote, authorizing the city attorney to prepare a response to former building inspector. End quote, I advise the council to get a full command of the fact. Prior to wasting funds on lawyers, threatening on the staff. In the eleven months since I left Key Money, row one, not one person from the council administration has contacted me upon this contract. After reading the staff reports even clearer, that the council is ready to engage in legal action prior to obtaining a full command of the facts. The afternoon you're about to take is predicated on three fallacies. Item number one, that the contract with Mr. Davis is illegal. Nothing could be further from the truth. Nothing could be further from the truth. The contract was vetted by the city attorney and recommended it to both the mayor and myself by a three-way conference call. The contract is legal and was entered into and been phased by all parties. Fallacy number two, that monthly billing was not provided by Mr. Bates. However, a monthly bill was not requested by myself or the city council, which had the authority to request billing at any cost. To demand a monthly billing after the fact and hold up payments over a year. Under this premise is a classic form of the doctrine of impossibility. In other words, asking someone to perform work after the fact, which they can no longer perform. Number three fallacy is that Mr. Davis should, quote, be required to submit documentation demonstrating work completed. Work products were in the building permit software and computer program, also in the paper files housed by the city of Kewaunee at city hall. How can Mr. Davis produce documents that the city controls and that Mr. Davis does not control? It is not possible. Finally, Mr. Davis completed the work required by the contract. The council was obviously changing the performance measurements of the contract after the fact and threatening Mr. Davis with legal actions. These three points are the foundation of the council's argument for not paying Mr. Davis and threatening him with legal action. It is clear to me that these three points are baseless and the entire argument collapses upon a minimal amount of scrutiny. Testified before you today in public on tape about this contract. And if I'm so compelled by it, I will testify to this exact same thing should this council decide to take legal action against Mr. Davis. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak before the council this evening?
I'm Matt M. two eight four three County Road B. And I also would like to hear answers to the question for take this.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the council this evening in our public comment?
Free time, everyone. I'm Lisa Harris. I live on five two six third Chilwell, just south of town. I'm coming to again ask for questions about the development. Because I have kids in this school district that are going to be looking for jobs. And we would love to see, we're here, we'd love to see businesses here. And I have out of town family that I constantly have to send to neighboring towns. Things that are proposed in the waterfront vision that could be answered by these questions. So your consideration of those questions would be appreciated.
Anyone else wish to speak before the council this evening in our public comment?
Hello, I'm Cassie John at six eleven North Street. As a local business owner, I'm offering stopping today to just voice my. Opinion about the recommendation for the development downtown for the Quatner property. I'm in favor of that and any kind of growth in our downtown, which our council, we'd be very interested. I haven't seen many of you in downtown, and I would like to see more of it. It'd be great. And I'd like to see more foot traffic and more business and that she's putting Kathy, putting a lot of time and effort into this thing. And it seems like it would be nice to get a phone call back from any one of our representatives. My other concern was, I guess I was reading through the minutes today. It seems like there's a lot of opinion rather than fact in a lot of the statements that were made to these requests for council actions. And I would like more facts instead of questions. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak before the council this evening in our public comment? Anyone else wish to speak in our public comment this evening? If not, public comment, then local. Hang on. Item five, boards, commissions, committee, and staff reports. Police and fire commission, public property committee agenda, personnel committee agenda minutes, light off preservation committee agenda minutes. Plan commission agenda minutes, finance committee agenda minutes, public works committee agenda minutes, and staff reports. Comments or questions regarding those? We have a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. Item six, mayor's report. Well, I'm saddened to report that Chief Kleiman is going to be retiring. And after thirty-plus years of wearing the uniform, he's going to enjoy some free time. But it's my pleasure tonight to announce that the police and fire commission has given the position of chief of police to Robin Miller. And I would like to welcome Robin as our new chief, once Jim is officially retired on the twentieth of January, I believe is the date. So congratulations, Robin. That's all I have this evening on our mayor's report. Item seven, unfinished business. A authorized city attorney to prepare a response to former building inspector regarding compensation. Common council may elect to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investigating of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. So at this time, we will have open conversation discussing. Heath, I'm going to turn it over to you for now.
What this involves is trying to come up with a response to voices that. In our opinion, did not have any. Yeah. What information we have, which was included in the package, is a listing, inspection base. Inspection report. Very accurate explanation of government software. In some cases, we have documents that. Construction design documents that our current inspector has to then follow up and try and track down. The party said it already submitted, requesting new documentation. What we're requesting is our city attorney. Just want to have some kind of indication, want to prepare some kind of response to say. We recognize that you operated as a contract, but it was not. It violates state law, it violates the city's policy. If the contract didn't indeed come from Mr. Davis, he actively engaged in the construction of group services. Throwing a budge of the city, which also is a violation of state law. Nobody apparently elected to know that. The contract was never approved by council, the public sign. Never did come for approval, therefore it is not a binding contract, not a binding agreement. What we're looking for tonight on our notice that Mr. Davis operated as a productive, effective department about contracts. If he can do this work for us. So we're trying to determine this. Is this level compensating? Have received what we actually. And that's sort of. Corrections, trying to be on this conversation. What is called the value of the. That's nature. Then my staff can coverage, actually see sheet information that would be two years. And requires some detailed information. Because this particular kind of operation is particularly. Department requires a. What, what is the documentation of this? That's some kind of track record. Like now, our track record is not very good. That's a direction from councils to hold one of its spawn. Not a, not an attempt as the. After I'm here. All we want to do is to pose it and move on. By the most expeditions possible, also protecting our rights. So with that in mind.
I'll respond. A couple of questions. Number one, can anybody sitting at this table has ever said that we were taking Mr. Davis through the court? That's what somebody got up here, that the city was taking legal action against Mr. Davis and was going to take him to court. Who, whoever said that? I don't remember that. Wait, wait a second. Give me a couple of minutes. I've never heard that. I've never heard one single council member say, anybody sitting at this table, that we were going to take Mr. Davis through the court. Whoever said that? That's a complete fallacy. It's just not true. Absolutely not true. To get up there and say that this council was taking him to court is a bold-faced lie. Never have, ever. Smile all you want. It's not true. Number two, number two. This was a letter that I sent to the, that I had sent to the assertive attorney that addressed both Mr. Davis's actions and the mayor's actions. And I'm wondering, I'm asking the city attorney, why this letter was not included in the agenda pack?
Why is because it was currently planned, that that was provided to the council as your attorney.
Okay. Okay, I'm just wondering why you would want to protect. You did address some of that here, which, which may have been in this legal document. But I'm just wondering how you only addressed part of what was in here and not all of what was in here.
I don't have an answer all the way up because it's not my intention to protect. It's any word you decide, you want to give an opinion or make it part of the whole thing that you can. But that's not really my.
I, I just had a quick question. I'm sorry. That wasn't involved in all this happening. Someone came up here and said that the contract was legal. And we said that the contract wasn't. Is it possible at this time that attorney could shed some light on what everyone's talking about in all transparency for everyone?
Okay, with me talking, you know.
Please do. Any objections?
I don't have an objection. So the issue that was presented.
Meanwhile, there's this document that is being reported to be a contract between Davis and inspections. And it was signed by the mayor, as I've learned, and it was a review by the then. Also for ultimate. And. You have the power unless you specifically delegate. You have the power to contract something after this. So a lot of easy contracts are delegated, authorized for the public store. I've learned is that that didn't happen. So the pure legal question was. The law, quite frankly, get into it. A bargain contract. So. In a written opinion, because we're talking about it, I'll just read. Question presented was, is the contract still signed? Also still considered binding contract for certain. My answer, in my opinion, no, it is not. He's always fairly clear in this. Or to act on a city's behalf is reserved to the city itself, unless the power has been specifically delegated. By any case, Hocking versus Dodgeville, say twenty-ten, list nine, paragraph thirty-six, three twenty-six, list one fifty-five, seventy. It's slightly different way. Unless the power to bind the municipality financially has been specifically delegated. The only entity with statutory authority to contract is the county. That is a quote from Bull's Bar versus Safeway Steel Products in two thousand and five, where you have before you, paragraph one two. Radio with second two fifty, seven oh eight, northwest second thirty-six. The paragraph, based on the materials you provided, not only did the council not delegate the authority to contract with the building inspector to mayor, but rather specifically obtain the authority to do so. The purchasing policy clearly states that purchases of fifteen thousand dollars required bids and no sole approval, including super majority approval with only one bid obtained. Further, the policy states that purchase orders are not required for the purchase of professional contracted services because those expenditures are contracted must have prior council. So to me, it was pretty clear cut under the law that, that the mayor signing that counter without counsel, bringing it rubber standard. Contract in itself. I was. I know for everything this city needs. And the law doesn't. And the law doesn't, unless you specifically delegate. The law doesn't. Hurt budget, purchase of authority. Never seen any authority like that. My understanding too is that I did review. That during A K S back in twenty twenty one. I would love to call it the talk, but if it may not, it may pass away. But. His, his view of this situation was. Yeah, and as we talked about earlier though. I agree with you all, I don't know why the city would ever take Davis to building. Court, but he's going to take anybody to court in the end, he was saying, he's the one looking for them up. So there would be no reason to take him to court. The outstanding issue here is that no one was. That he provided some services for this. This is nothing except, right? Yeah, while there maybe isn't a contract. From the city's perspective, they didn't receive some services that put value to those services. And that's what we've got. And maybe, as, as I talked about. Maybe the contract value from the alleged contract value is what is there in due order, maybe it is. But we just need to find that out, and that's why the request is to grow what was done and why, when, and.
As a matter of fact, at a prior, at a prior meeting. I even said, and I think all of you will remember, I even said that Mr. Davis did do some work here. He did do some work. And I even said, if this would go to court. And I don't believe there's a judge in the world. Who is going to say that the city does not have to pay Mr. Davis or any. I said that at a meeting. I've said. What I have said, and I think what everyone else has said, what the past administrator is saying, what this administrator is saying, what this council is saying. We are not just going to pay a bill for twenty six thousand dollars simply because the ex-mayor sat there and said, hey, and we did the work. Which is what he did sitting in that table. He said, Pam, you did the work, that's what he said at a meeting. We're not going to sit here and pay someone. Twenty six thousand dollars at eighteen percent interest per month, which is probably is the illegal as you can get. And just pay out a bill because someone sits at a front table and says, pay it. We don't know what he owes. And I'm not sure that it should be this council who decides how much money he owes. This isn't twenty six hundred dollars, this is twenty six thousand dollars. I'm going to be clear, I said, Mr. Davis has owed some money. And I'm going to say it right now, we need to pay him some money. How much? I don't know. And who would make that decision? My guess is if it goes to court, it would have to be a judge. Would determine what that amount would be.
If it bunch of courts, ultimately the judge would be making that.
Correct.
Of course, council, you have the power to make him talk. The question is, who makes that decision?
Is there a way we can go about this? I guess that's. Well, we, we have a, we have, we have estimate of, of services provided, but it's really. That family, that's a phrase. What, you know, he didn't. You don't know, I don't know what he did at all. And so that's kind of what makes it tricky. I can say, well, I know he didn't, I'm any second. Say, I know he didn't do that. But when it comes to the pressure. Maybe he did, maybe I don't, I have no idea, I know he didn't do something. I know that he had another person coming up and he saw it. So it's a little bit difficult to put nicely on it. You don't, you don't have any accurate records that it actually did, and that's my frustration.
I guess I would say, yeah, we have to work back on what we do know he did. Correct, and, and I, and one thing I would like to make a point of, I think. Want to know what his really was, we were requesting this really. Prior to the time we, we actually received it, there were questions. Yeah, we were, I mean, I know I asked. Billing from.
I asked for the billing.
Repeat every month I ask.
We were told by the mayor, he was going to pay at the end of the year. Sat right there and said it. Who sends a bill six months later? We asked for documentation as to what he's been doing every month. And we say he's, and we're told he's going to pay it at the end of the week. Really?
That's moving into a, we have this, can we send a payment for what we. Not, not the stuff that he did.
Oh, he did.
I thought you had itemized that.
But it's, but it's. Very much.
Then you can, there's nothing we can verify this.
I think that what I could, I could prove. That's what this, that's what this document is, it's what he didn't.
Tony, Tony, what is your recommendation on, on the next step here?
I recommend. It's an inspector. You know, if he's a contract out to another inspector because. Well, and he very well may not, right? There's nothing obligating to give us anything. At the same time. Want to get paid theoretically and say, okay, this is what I'm doing. He wants to the biggest deal. I have contract, I'm, I'm going to see you, reaching, not paying me. And that's a different discussion that we all have, but I think the best step is, you know, to get this issue taken care of in, in the past. Is to just play out from a letter from my office. We want to finish this, this is what we need to provide so we can prosper. And then from there, we look. Compare that to the note that you will have. And then from there, you know, we all have a network enough of building inspectors and other municipalities, say, well, this is kind of fair market value for the. And we run math from there, I think that's. You know, we're having the same conversation. We're not just going to pay this contract. Maybe then, because well, from what we can tell, this is what you did do. So here's excellent.
So do we have a motion to direct the city attorney to send a letter requesting that information from Davis? And once, if we get that material back, we can then redo that and move forward from there.
I'd make that motion, I'll respect him.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carried. All right, then we'll move on to item nine, new business, nine A, discussion and recommendation for proposed development of the Hammacher Klockner property. Keith, want to start us off, please? Eight was, wasn't it closed?
Change it, you said.
Okay.
I, I had a, had discussions. Developing property, the property. Into the city with an actual development plan program. And a business model for the project. Which include seven suite hotel, event center. Retreat center, dining facility, cafe, market, or this, and outdoor fitness facility. Vacation time areas. Proposal was. Including a financial analysis and bill pharma. This was the additional concern of quite members of council. Effective cost in proposal with the former increase by five million dollars. Out of which two point one nine dollars is supposed to be. It's about the idea that whatever they get sold, actually results in. How much, well, that depends on how one actually built. You can specify it's with a target for an assessment. Just for example, at twenty thousand dollars, you can try to. The result of that attachment becomes dollars. As of set day for taxation prices. This is a property that is down to zero. The other problem that was based on this, it's sort of the proponents are running into sort of a problem here because. There are at least two numbers being reflected by the front. It operates on the notion of. The only places they get even close to something like that, places like development, interior. Like a resort or. You know, or something like that. And then not all of doing. Lots baby strip, they have hotels, all kinds of bells and whistles today. You get the bell, the bell is different kind of year round occupancy. Kind of the mayor operates themselves and you know. Pointed out earlier that he operates himself at home and it's.
Want to seize all part of the world here.
Yeah. Anyway, as, as certainly, these three, three rounds of fights for people. Which the officers invented some kind of expertise. The last one explained last. And that's where we are. Did it propose to have a meeting on September twenty three? But in my understanding, based on my understanding of what occurred on the other side. That was supposed to be a meeting with our engineers and another group of people to talk about potential developments around the city. And options for development, that's what was sort of tacked on. And that's where we found out that Cedar Park was actually being asked to help them on that side of data on the other side. What triggered us to say. Not technically. They are operating as if they are hard to factor. So on that basis. The alarm bells went off in my head and sort of get that. All right, and so discussing with the mayor, which was. Out of an abundant caution. You don't want to get in a position where. We're in there without any kind of engineering service on our side because of the engines, they'll be right outside of the table. Not quite a conflict of interest, but it's false. I've discussed this with Tony agrees. Out of an abundance of caution here. However, didn't I get caught? Thankfully, right after that. Was it? I have checked my records. Why have I ever gotten a phone? I'll leave it out there as it, so. I'll pay credit on that. But anyway, that's where we are. I distributed. Now, the question for you is if should we continue to. Or do you want to continue? Then we have a request for proposal, I'm unsure of the qualifications. Request proposal means if you have to. You respond, it has to go through a lot of technical. Come up with a plan. Request qualification, however, allows you to say. Center for this project. And it gives them the opportunity to provide us kind of a background set of information about who they are, what they bring, they think they're. It has a potential proof of. Much easier way to go about it, much more likely to generate interest for somebody. But that would be the program that we. At the same time that this was happening or that this sort of. Still. The investor to attend, she's like. That's the alternative, you can up the. One advantage of that is not writing my. Not doing a marketing program. But that's a, sort of the choice you make. Own thing, trying to come up. Winters, or we. Have on this one.
Yeah, we, I'd just like to make a couple of comments here, first off, is anybody sitting at this table against this project? Anybody sitting here say they don't want this project to go for the city, go through for the city? So has anybody ever said they don't want this project to succeed? I, I don't think, but I just kind of make just one more comment. This is a Facebook post, and I think what you're talking about, Keith. Goes a little bit with this Facebook post, I'm not going to read the person's name, but this was posted by Kathy. Says there are city developer agreements to finalize negotiations and projects to be reviewed by the city councils. And it is a complicated site environmentally, but essentially. Were able to produce proof of financing. Has anyone sitting at this table ever seen any proof of finance?
I think before we, we go any further.
From anyone.
I think before we go any further, we did invite Miss Desbit here tonight, and I would like to give her the opportunity to have the floor and come before the council if she so wishes. Thank you. You're fine. Thank you.
Well, yeah, to your question. And that specifically was why we arranged. For a meeting in October because our investors came to town. But we had. Been drawn up of the latest performer. Mike will be joining me on this, so he could. More specifically to it. Um, and it was canceled. And according to Mr. Eddie. It was canceled because the mayor requested it be canceled.
Because of the conflict of interest.
Because of conflict of interest. From what you're saying, I called you three times. I emailed you three. I have emails, so. When I hear you, I'm sorry, sorry. I haven't met you. Yeah, all right. Well, I could use you. I have never met you because I tried to meet you, Mr. Eddie. Well, I have your emails and I have all messages. And I, you know, I followed up on that day because it makes sense. It made no sense to me. I thought. You know, I have a list of things you're supposed to need that I. I originally had worked with, with. A city administrator and, and the final communication was. Been a couple tough years, hold it. The final communication in June twenty first, twenty twenty one. Was you'll need this, 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 and this. For us to reconsider. You know, you're having control of the land. All right, so Mike and I, we just started working on it. And, and, and I hope that I got the copy of that. That's all. Well, let's see, three of these items I, I submitted. A year, sometimes two years ago, that required the city to respond back to us. So let's see, there's one, two, three, four. Five, let's say the confidentiality agreement will be executed following this. So. The only thing left for us to do, that was legitimate. Sure. You want to sit back down? You want to see who? Even though we have five consultants that are national consultants, well-known proven consultants that all come in on this team. Give you thousands of dollars worth of information. Sure, I understand. Yeah, they need, they need more legitimacy. COVID, economics, all of that, we can bog down. It's been a challenge. Yeah, but under respect. No, the respect is the council and bring them up to speed. Twenty eight was the historical. Um, that we brought it all up to speed and the only thing left that was significant that you asked before. Was this financing plan. You know how hard that is to get the investors in a town that's not proven? Well, guess how hard it's going to be for me now? The city wouldn't even meet with us after they flew into town. After they came here.
Can I interrupt you on that for a second? I was told the investors were already here. They were not flying in just for that meeting because that meeting, I wasn't even aware you were going to be at. And Mr. Lenders here and I had that conversation with him.
Relevant that they, if they. They were.
It's relevant.
A lot of money.
It's relevant.
Okay.
Because I'm not on social media, but I'm being told that that was being put out there, that the city turned people away that flew in from New York.
Meaning, they're canceling. Okay, let's address this. This is really interesting. You canceled it because Cedar Corp had a conflict of interest. You decided at the last minute. They had discussed this with you. I had a letter from them that they discussed that that cleared. That in fact, it would be okay. Doesn't that make sense? Since they already know that difficult piece of property. They're engineers, that they might assist all of us collaboratively in doing that property correctly. And by the way, what does that have to do with your relationship with my project?
Because they were going to be, they were going to be on the financing side of it.
Then they, they cleared that up within that day. That they weren't.
Are we going to try to get your RFP and your promotional thing together here and present to the council? Or are we going to continue the bickering? Because I don't foresee us going anywhere.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Born. I think it, I think it's absolutely relevant. When you're asking when in your, when you're asking for. For city money. I think it's absolutely relevant. What they do for the city, if they're doing engineering, if they're doing.
No, they officially said we would not jeopardize. Cities opportunity, nor yours, yeah.
Right. I was addressing what you said because you asked if it was how it was relevant. Well, it is. Okay, do you have, I just want to ask again, Kathy. Do you have? Written commitments and written financing? Because in this document right here. Part of the extension clearly says. A commitment from an acceptable financial institution. To provide necessary debt financing for the project.
Yeah.
I think all I'm asking is, do you have a commitment from a bank? To finance this project and do you have written commitments from any of your investors to do that?
Then sent you several times in different emails. There are several very important. Um, materials that need to be generated by the city. Must understand that.
I do.
Can't get written commitment without a collaborative. But we're, 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 we're going to do this. We haven't even talked about the kid district. You want to join me, Mike district?
You posted it that said you had proof of financing. It says it right. No, you did not. No, you did not say that. You did not say that.
Well, it must.
We were able to produce. Of fin, but essentially, we were able to produce proof of financing. Well, sure. To who? Not to me, you haven't.
If you weren't, if they weren't here.
Well, my question. No, Kathy, you put this on, you put this on social media.
So.
You put it on social media.
The specific, that, that's, this is how you're going to review my financing now? You're not going to talk to the actual group that can explain exactly how they arrange it? You're not going to talk to my consultant under one-on-one meeting?
Absolutely.
Legitimate about how you decide if. If. Money and expenses. Based on waterfront. Your waterfront plan, your communities, right? Their waterfront plan, not mine. I'm representing the community. And I'm the one that's been out in the community, working with individuals in the community.
All right, just if we can, if we can turn it over. Mr. Lender and yes, we also represent the community and their tax money. All right, so let's be clear on that.
I hope you do.
Mike, please.
Hi, everybody. My name's Mike Lender. We have a pet. My company is Hotel R and D. I've been in the hotel industry. Operations. And my, my knack is. And Kathy is right. Been working very hard for years. There are issues that have come up such as pandemic. It certainly isn't. There's no banks. Talking for one thing. This is an institutional financing project. In twenty six and half million dollars unless you go through multiple banks. So then, those are what we're talking to. So we're working with an institute. Investment. And he's, he's a better, with no better term than he's a money finder. And he's done this. All street banker and all the good stuff. He's qualified and he's very vetted. And he's got interest sources. But. We can't and he can't make a move until we have some level of possession of the property. To build, to develop this property. That's really the only thing. And yes, I know there was one. And there was one and that was fine. Now we have a new group and that part of that. Need those things in order to.
Mike, if I may ask, so I understand the concern. Full disclaimer, I have never done a twenty six million dollar project myself. Um, but I have done a number of projects and I do understand regardless of what level that you're doing. Um, you know, when you put in an offer to purchase or if it's a developer's agreement or what have you. That offer is put in with contingencies, right? So I mean, to get to the next level where the city. Is comfortable understanding that there's actually our people back there as opposed to just some shadow figures that. We have no idea that if they're going to be serious or not, and even if we see them face to face. Doesn't mean that they're going to put their money where their mouth is, right? So I guess that's what we're looking for is something that, okay, it's not going to be the first national bank. Um, but it's going to be a big investment firm or firms, which obviously there's people out there that that's what they do with their money. They invest. I guess, how are we going to get to that point? What, you know, I, I, I see. Uh, Kathy had put some things in there that, you know, that she's looking for, but ultimately the city is also looking for. So what comes first?
I think, I think just from experience and I'm not, you know, knowledgeable on the legal side of it or how community necessarily work. This isn't the first time I've been in one of these meetings and. Conversations. But I think a pre-development agreement. Uh, and, and again, whatever's been done up to this point. Either dwell on that or let's start this with a development agreement. If it requires some level of. Always attention, right? Everybody happy, then. We'll look at that. But an option on that property, so we can go ahead and show the developer, the investors that we have control of that, that it's not going to be. Uh, RFP or whatever, it's not going to be sent out after we go through the.
That's where the challenge is going to be. I mean, we've been standing at the bus station here, waiting for a bus. It's never coming. This has began in twenty eighteen. I understand the whole pandemic. I get it. We all survived. At least, everybody in here did. Um, God bless those that didn't. But having said that, there's people made money all along. During the pandemic. Some lost money, some made money. Put that aside, fast forward to today, we're almost into twenty twenty three. And you know, where are we at? We're, we're blaming it on things, but yet now we're focusing it on. The city needs to do something here to help the investors. Well. If we're going to put out RFQs or RFPs. And see what, you know, we're going to get out of that and hopefully market it better so we can get more responses. I'm anticipating people are going to come forward with their plan, their contingency, and they're going to make an offer to the city. Now, I don't know that other than, uh, the documents that, uh, for this project. I, I don't know that I've ever seen an actual offer and that offer then would also include the contingencies. Right? Whatever, you know, it has, it has to do with the phase two environmental, what have you. Where, where would that be? When would that come? I mean, I hear, I hear it coming back to us. The ball's in our court, but I, I don't see it that way.
Funny, are you asking for Mike from the city? How much money do you think? I mean, if you're, I guess my point is if you're going to your investment group. And your investment group says. Yes. We will invest. In this project. We think it's a great project. We will invest in this project. But we need this. I mean, if I went to the bank to borrow on a house. Yes, I will borrow you eighty thousand dollars, but you need twenty thousand. So my question is, how much city money? Taxpayer money are you guys looking for? To move this project forward? I don't think that that's a very difficult question. Aside from the, now I'm talking about aside from the property itself. Because in this document right here. It also says that the city will provide four hundred and forty five thousand dollars. Of infrastructure. So now not only is it the city, are we committing to just the property? Or are we also committing to the four hundred and forty five thousand dollars? Of infrastructure that goes into that property? And how much is the investment group looking? In tax money? To get from the city? I think that's really what you need to tell us. We're not going to come to you and say, we offer you three. You have to come to us or your investment group has to come to us and say, we want X amount of dollars. Then I think we can move forward from there. I don't even know how we can make a decision. Unless we know what your investment group wants.
And I don't know where the four forty five. Somewhere, obviously. There's not a, a chance in the world. That we would sit in front of the city and ask for one dollar. It just doesn't, if, if a, if a project requires. If funding. Be successful, then it's not feasible. Then it's not going to be successful.
You know.
Where the TIP comes in. And the TIP is taxpayer money that's given to the developer. It's a pay go, assuming that it's a pay though. So all the funds are raised. It's either a tax abatement as an incentive for the developers to create the project. It's also a, a distribution of dollars that are being paid in property tax. That's an incentive for the return on investment, to get investors to purchase. That's the purpose of a TIP. There's no free money.
There is no, there is no gift money.
Right.
I mean, there isn't. So if you get. Yeah, if you get X amount of dollars, the city has to borrow that money. To give, basically give.
That's why. I mean, if, if there's a lot of communities. Come on now. For dangling the TIP carrot in front of developers. Every city I've done market studies for inevitably dangle the carrot of TIP. If they understand, if they don't, those investors, those developers, those projects probably won't. So that's the only way that TIP comes up. We are not asking, I am not, and I'm not part of any group. That's asking for TIP. It was mentioned that there was a TIP.
Just to clear the record then, there's no TIP money, no city money. This is all investor money going into this project. That's what you're saying today.
That we have to raise twenty six and a half million dollars. How, how, if there's additional work that needs to be done on the site, we could easily come back to, let's say. The help of the city.
Person was making, I was just going to say that. So you're looking to do a project with lots of money, right?
Yeah, no. We can't make an offer without backing it up. And we can't back it up without having control at least of action on that.
That'd be the contingencies. That'd be the offer. Okay, just, just so I can go back to the communication thing. It, it's been going on since twenty eighteen, right? And I felt the best way to get this project either moving forward or going to RFQ, RFP is to get the whole body involved in this. Instead of meeting in my office down the hall and then reiterating it again to here. Okay? That's, that's the other part of it. So I don't like to get blamed for the meeting being canceled is a problem. You can hear it. We're there. We're here.
Question for, uh, Minister Eddie. This comes from our last public property committee. That we were going to identify. Issues were with the property of president, what encumbrances. Developing that property. Have you formulated any answer to that? Know what those issues are that we have to. Overcome. The N R has said that there's still a vapor. That he has to compute on the property. That is not done yet. It's probably what I do about.
It's probably what I do about ground paper problems. There's also a cap issue. The area that's currently gravel parking lot is also a gap. So if we're going to develop in that cap, we're then have to have to request that rehabilitation that section of property. I don't want to put a cap on it. Put stuff on top of it, which can't not supposed to be. So those are the kinds of things that I have to do. For the property. All of the base needs to get out from under the requirements of DNR. So they're aware of question. Whether there's a problem or you have to be told, how you plan to resolve it. And then also the main cap work and then something where they can. That's going to slow down the development of that. DNR is going to probably tap on you and.
So until the DNR. But of course, that issue has been resolved. Can we really market this property at all?
Can if you be interested in doing all of this. You don't necessarily have to be. Because you can hear the property will become an issue. So you can be a remark property as is. As long as you clear and you close that everything that's criminal issue brings an issue and you know, so that could impact either kind of price to get. Or a property depending level of interest they have in trying to alter.
We're doing Cedar Court. We must have read other students, all the stuff that I speak from.
But I didn't understand half of it. And the and the key is that. Just what do you recite?
What can we do on it?
You tell me, is this something that the city is willing to the finish up with left Cedar? Or finish up with?
Okay, and and getting back to Cedar Court, there was two different balls in the air with them. Okay, so let's be clear. And we're not mudding the waters with what Cedar Court's involvement is with this project. Cedar Court, anything going on with the city of Kiwanee and the engineering or anything else with Cedar Court? It's been clear understanding that they're working for the city, right? If they're doing anything on the investment side with the other part of their corporation, they're welcome to do that outside the city. But if they're going to be in the city, then they're not going to be the engineers. That's just been a clear understanding. And it was unfortunate. It just kind of came up. It it was not any intent by them or anything. It just came up. So we will do what the city needs to do on that property because we want to market that property, move that property and get some quality development on there. That has always been the intent.
That was my fault. Really was my fault with Cedar Court because I was used to working with Cedar Court. I've worked on a few projects and was compared to the state either before with the relationship with another group of finances. There was no intent to connect those two. So I don't, they've stepped away and they've stepped away.
Right, yeah.
So we can make a new offer on this private with contingency. And if that's acceptable, then give us whenever time we necessary in that offer.
So having said that, I I think what the council is looking at doing, I I don't believe the council is interested in an exclusivity agreement again. I don't know that that's necessary. The the intent, I think, tonight was to determine if they want to do that, if the council wants to do that. Otherwise, it it could go, it's going to go back to likely back to the public property committee unless the council wants to keep everything here that everybody's involved with this scope of this size on project, it may stay at council level for discussions on the next step. So that next step, I think we could do two things. We can keep the thing moving with an RFQ or RFP. You guys continue to entertain your offer to the city. I don't know why we can't do both. I I just feel if we're going to sit here to be set up for, we could go another year, give you an exclusivity for another year and still be holding nothing.
It's possible that the land isn't even buildable.
Anything's possible.
I just want to say I'm glad you both came here and did this in open session rather than another closed session like has been going on in the past. I'm glad you did this in open session because I'll tell you one thing, I feel a hell of a lot better now in the past ten minutes than I have felt about this whole about this whole development, I'll be honest with you.
Other person also?
I would like to say, I am, you know, clearly, everybody here is very supportive of you. I myself did not reach out to you because I didn't know like it was appropriate. You know, most often you contact me. And if you didn't contact me that we thought I would call you to come. I don't, I want you to understand it's we didn't reach out to you because of that. It it wasn't because we didn't support you. It's not really our role or place.
I wish you would have called one of us.
I mean, I I I miss talking to you. I mean, it's like, you know, I know everybody's well meaning, but I say it all the time, you know, right? Besides, you know, I completely know remote, and look at all the time you wasted because so I I I really believe, you know, the reason I was riled up is I felt so dismissed. I mean, I made for market studies that were requested from a city. Money, feasibility studies. I gave you my accounting of how much I invested for and for the community. You think I'm, you know, I'm a big hot shot developer? No, I did it all because I want them to participate. I want the city to be a destination. I want, you know, that's all. That's it. That was my passion.
Anyone else?
I was just, I, why don't you just call me back and say, we apologize, Kathy? You know, we're just trying to get our ducks in a row here. That's why.
I think you could. So why, so why we did, so why, if I can, yeah, if I can answer. If I can answer your question. So the reason I I asked the administrator to reach out to you to let you know the meeting, I wanted to come to the meeting. I wanted you at the meeting. I wanted this to be discussed at full council, okay? And he told me that that was expressed to you. And that's why I wanted it like this. So this could happen the way it did tonight. I didn't want to have another meeting down the hall with anybody regarding this because it's been going on for four years, going nowhere. With any luck, we'll get something further here.
I thought you needed to see and talk to people concretely, not just Kathy going to the Hollywood House. But, you know, big ship developers, you make that, talk to the investors and they weren't here to do that. Not specifically about that. So I must have misunderstood, you know, what you were doing. And the only last thing I would say that I would be plus because I I I have to respect the community who's been working on this is will you be addressing the subjective questions that they suffered?
They've been submitted to the attorney and typically under public comment, those aren't engaged at that meeting, but we'll we'll look.
Yeah, I don't know when or how, because I don't know what's appropriate, but.
But I appreciate the public's, I appreciate the public's input and you know, this council is is looking at doing the best, best that we can for the community as well. So that's, that's what we're to do. Any other questions before? Okay, well, I appreciate you guys informing.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point, I guess the council needs to decide if what they want to do. You guys want to? You want to wait for their proposal or you want?
They're going to give us an offer of some type.
I would think that we would not go to RFQ. I mean, it sounds like they're going to make a proposal on the property. I think we should. She spent a lot of time and invested a lot of her own money and I think we at least over to wait to get the proposal.
How long, how long to put a proposal together? So the next council meeting? The next council meeting? Okay. So if the council understands that they would have a proposal presented to the council at the next meeting, if is there, if there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion to accept that or to make that move. A move. Any discussion?
Three days, but the next council meeting will be under well, twelve. So I think I think.
So the January council meeting? Well, I'm not, I'm not saying it's how many days, it's like, give a date, like January council meeting isn't that early. I mean, that's.
It gives them a little extra time to get it together without rushing through it. And I think the January council meeting would be fine. Give them a little extra time.
Well, if we were
Would you like to amend your motion to state the January ninth council meeting would be the deadline?
I'll amend my motion to to wait till the January ninth council meeting. To address it at the January ninth council meeting.
Any further discussion?
Maybe, don't have somebody got to have it to us, so. You know what I mean? We can't get it on January.
Well, but what 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 Karen's saying is if we have it prior to that meeting, so we would have it in a packet for council review. So would you want to run it to the public properties? I I that's up to the council. I mean, I'm just thinking the 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 scope of what we're addressing here. I mean, in the timeline that it takes to go back and forth. I don't know what the chair feels, but I I just felt that it might be better addressed at the full council, but I don't know what your wishes are.
You would rather have it be at full council, that's fine with me. Really, if people go to public property. If you want, if you wanted, council will do it at council. If you're on public property, I'll put it on the members agenda.
Keith, what what type of timeline then would you think prior to the council meeting, you would like to see the city receive that offer? So that that will exceeds their thirty days and it'll be here then for the January council meeting. Second of January. So once again, I would need an amendment to your offer to be the offer received January second to be reviewed at the January ninth. No further discussion, correct? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
So so we are giving exclusivity one month.
I didn't say anything about exclusivity. I just said that they will get us an offer by then. That's all that's in here is that we're giving that much time to get us an offer.
And on January ninth, we'll discuss where we are.
Correct.
So so I guess why are we doing this as a vote? Because the ball is at their court to give us the offer.
I would receive it as a vote. Just that we're affording them that time. Further discussion?
Giving them till January second to.
Submit an offer on the property. That's all. That's all it is. All in favor signify by saying aye. Most, motion carried. Thank you. B, approve a revised revised agreement to provide fire and ammo services with Kiwanee Solutions. Kiwanee Power Station.
One power station is formerly owned by created to be funded in agreement. We are now owned by a company called Monisix. Operator, they they own another, they're smaller doing is they're just requesting minor revisions to the previous service agreement, remain in place until then. Essentially the same as the prior owners, minor modification. I know this went back.
It's just kind of a housekeeping thing with the new ownership, correct? Or anything? Yes, a motion to uh, who's going to be signing it? So a motion to authorize me to sign the agreement with Kiwanee Solutions Incorporated. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carried. C, approve the transfer of funds for the liability replacement project.
Uh, this is one that came up to, it was May, uh, where the city was made to base the funding on some of our funds. Request fund, general fund. It amounted to source, uh, staff said it's going to be common that we do that. So we're moving it from, rather than doing small funds that we come from one utility funds and actually the funds are built from art, but one building funds. Fund six eleven. So that's what the transfer is. The previous transfer, by the way, never happened. So that that money doesn't transfer it's happens another transferring from art but to money.
I don't need a roll call for that, do I? I mean, it is money, but it was already approved, but I'll I'll do it anyway.
Yeah, do we know how much is left in here? I mean, it seems like we're taking out our funds for just by.
And we have two hundred something in there?
Much is left in the offer. It just seems that we're taking.
We have this, but we have to spend it.
Yeah, I was just wondering how much is left in the.
Okay, do I have a motion now to approve a transfer?
I'll second it.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Uh, could you please call the roll? Hardest job you're gonna have the rest of the day, I promise.
Wendy. John.
Yeah.
Jim.
Eric. Rich. Raven. Shunita.
Motion carried. D, consider an act on combination class B alcohol retail license for Honegins LLC DBA, the Blue Door Pub. Two oh eight Ellis Street, Lindsay. Neshad, Neshad, Neshadlam? Agent.
Uh, this is this is an application for an original class B alcohol beverage retail license. Uh, the original application was missed. I don't know.
So I don't know if it, did this go to finance or it came straight here? Okay. I had asked the city administrator if this is new name on the original license for that address? Or if it's a new license for new people?
An original license with the same name?
Allison is is giving up the license for them to take, yes. Allison is, is giving up the license for them to take, yes.
That's, that was my, if it was a transfer from her to them for that address.
Yeah.
It's not a new license from our reserve?
No.
Okay. But that was the only clarity I needed. E two.
And it would be like, uh, yes, same, uh, the smoothie place wanted to serve alcohol, that could be a license.
We have, do we have one, one reserve or two reserve?
Or I, I'm not for sure. Okay, so do I have a motion for the approval? Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Review and consider purchase of cemetery management software program. You know, E.
The program that we're operating on right now is a variation of the authorization that has been essentially done sort of on file. That you don't have any tracking system. You have no idea who's technically supposed to be involved. There's no liability account. Send assistance.
And not using law.
Well, I mean was by a former councilman. Brad sort of is the stem on council. I don't think great and good cost. If you want to provide a means for people to have public access to which is all wrong, it's fine, you know, it's good. Public access to that, but the problem is contractual arrangement. How to pay control over on a product. Why would we go and work out the courses and alternatives because uh, that one will be that will retain staff or train. Transitioning workforce, maybe this that's why there's a maintenance. So this will be tied in to the workforce software and yes, it's a certain attachment. It that way it allows for things like
So if somebody and the workforce and also that in the cemetery program. And the money.
And it's, and it's a tracking system where, where the source appropriate right on. Which is finalizing something that's hurting the still the right formalizing the I use while we're suggesting this. Want to choose the reason, at least how to normalize system. Doesn't ask for a patient recovering.
But from legal standpoint, current system, it's your liability to the city?
Depends on what you mean by liability.
You've got to see a vote control or something.
Well, I'm not familiar with the whole background. Created by an older person. Arguably. But that's just arguably, you know, was that made within the course? But not only liability, but if you don't control it at some, at some point password protected, now you can't do it. That's where I would get the most hurt for you know, of the cost to pay for the professional module that sounds like it hooks onto whatever your overall model. To not have to worry about that.
Would you look into the, the cost still of the happen to migrate the I understand for courses. Not a particularly complicated. Obviously, no access, they've been over I don't know, global retention.
If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the software for the purchase of twenty five hundred dollars of my post. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Janita? Robin?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Eric? John?
Yep.
Jim? Wendy?
Motion carried. F, authorize City of Kiwanee Credit Card Company to issue a credit card for incoming police chief, Robin Miller. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Yeah, it's all good here, nothing to see. Your car just fall, time to check out. Uh, G, authorize Public Works to begin ordering materials for proposed Sixth Street Lift Station Rehabilitations.
This is a project that's actually in but the project is a rehabilitation model of the, of the thing that they're doing, new equipment, you know, the person ordering in advance because it's done in advance now this. So in order to get those components, couple of staff requesting places over now. Had this problem already with amateur lift station. Next year because we couldn't do it this year and components were not available. Why we're coming here asking you to
Is this not to exceed a hundred twenty thousand dollars on these utility, is that?
That was a budgetary price for us, um, so it should fall in there.
So we have that in the motion, we should be covered?
I just wanna have it noted that that when they're funded for the store and are still taking six thousand in the green debt, so our revenue projected
But just for the sake of the motion that the council understands a dollar amount that they're authorizing, so, okay. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Wendy? Jim? John? Rich? Robin? Janita?
H, authorize replacement of two thousand eleven Chevy Tahoe K nine squad.
Uh, this actually was a request arrived from a discussion. This in two thousand eleven Chevy John used it. And the department is requested this is main patrol squad, thus driven purchase of a new main patrol squad. Sometime late next year. But the order should go in this in staff notes this new vehicle is open, we're all saving the maintenance costs. Purchase also covered in the proposed budget, while noting that additional savings or right to the sale of the system. Um, essentially started as a discussion about things that are used to the goal. A couple of years old. File further on finding new main patrol squad, so starting to make the fragmentation. That's sort of the problem we're under right now.
Robin is here if you want. Before I turn it over to Robin, I know I Chief Kleinman was going through and saying that the getting the new acquisition of the new model Tahoe was, uh, looking, looking very challenging. So I just suggested, well, maybe look at a user. I mean, we got the last K nine vehicle was a used vehicle, it was a two thousand eleven. So the next day he followed up with me and he had found some vehicles and we were looking online and to one of the surplus vendors, he had found quite a few models, actually. There was twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. They were all around that ninety ninety some thousand miles. And the K nine unit is specific to Officer Gale because that's his vehicle, so it's not getting everybody cycling through that, through the shifts like squad one. They were around twenty nine thousand dollars for one of these twenty nineteen's. So we've been getting an eight year newer vehicle. Newer miles, I think there's a hundred twenty some thousand on a K nine, something like that, I think he'd said. And if, if he had the authorization to click buy now, add it to a shopping cart, I mean, it'd be there. But considering he had no authority to make that acquisition here today, gone tomorrow, and yeah, down the road. So I wasn't at the finance meeting, um, I guess the conversation I had with him and then subsequently he must have had it with Robin, of course, but I just thought if you can get one of those vehicles now at, say, thirty thousand dollars, liquidate the twenty eleven. There's still gonna be upgrades that need to go into whatever new vehicle we get or newer. And we're gonna make a lot of money ahead. Meanwhile put in for that twenty twenty four. And whenever that comes, it comes. There's just no guarantee on getting a vehicle. If there's one here we can get, I agree, that twenty eleven out there, it's I mean, they had to have the floorboard piece of metal put in it because he was doing a Fred Flintstone to stop the thing going down the road, you can see the driveway. So and then, I mean, the only other thing, and I, I apologize, I haven't had a chance to talk to Robin and I'll, I'll give her the floor here in a minute. But then we're gonna have a Ford, a Chevrolet and a Dodge. We're gonna have three vehicles out there. All different, um, all different service directions. We're going to service these things. They all need service whether they're new or not. Um, so I'm a little concerned about that. So having said that, I, I just felt that, that the city could get that vehicle at a much lesser rate and get that K nine going and then we can look at a brand new vehicle for squad one. And squad current one, squad one, we're gonna cycle down to squad two or whatever we decided at that time. But Robin, uh, why don't you come up, please, and give your pitch? I want to take all your oxygen.
So the K nine is a two thousand eleven and we acquired it at the very end of two thousand seventeen. But it was not actually put into service until two thousand and that vehicle is in top shape. With the two thousand nineteen that we have been looking at, that was huge. I discussed that with Jim. Most of them were coming out of Ohio. There are also vehicles with about a hundred thousand miles on them, which is about when something's gonna start going wrong. And you also don't know who had that vehicle or how they drove that vehicle. So rather than inherit someone else's problems in a vehicle with a hundred thousand miles and if things start to go awry we have the two thousand twenty one Tahoe that was purchased with the idea that it would become the K nine squad because it has the size, the room, raw, the equipment, the cage, the K nine. The Tahoe is quite large for most of us. And driving that around as a patrol vehicle compared to what some of us who've been around for a long time are used to driving, that we have the cars of the Impalas that left that. It is quite large. Officer Gale is used to driving a Tahoe, that's what he's been in for the last several years and he loves it. A lot of K nine squads out there are probably the reason that they need So that's something else that we wanted to address is that a lot of officers just aren't comfortable in this big vehicle. Let alone driving in emergency situations. So when you sit in it it's very hard to see out the back window. More so than any squad you've ever had before. Which makes things difficult. And a vehicle, this Tahoe as our number one squad or even that number two position that people freely are comfortable driving is a safety concern for officers. Now that they're making wrong with the vehicle, it's not that, it's just most of us are not used to driving that bigger vehicle. Would be a year sooner that we would transition that K nine squad to twenty twenty one into that spot, which was always the plan. The Dodge I understand, yes, a Chevy, a Ford, a Dodge. They all will have to be serviced somewhere. The problem with the Ford Explorers are you cannot get one right now. You cannot order one for twenty twenty three, they are not taking orders. Those orders needed to be placed by September ninth. And, um at that point weren't real serious about replacing the squad yet. Things kind of moved up because now the two thousand eleven has a check engine right now. And it goes in for service tomorrow at horns to find out what exactly that problem. So with that being said, if you place an order for a Ford now, it will be coming in twenty twenty four and we would be waiting. Officers Gale, hundreds of years wasn't really of shape. The Dodge is still available, uh, just because we ordered one. Um, and if I were to get approval, it would be in that in a very short matter. Because we're still not here at the point yet. There were Dodges that were canceled last year, so kind of crossing our fingers at this point that we would even be able to get the Dodge. The majority of the officers are on board with having a smaller sized vehicle with the cost at the thirty eight thousand, you know, essentially forty thousand dollars for the hundred twenty thousand that will fit it. The ten thousand transfer over Officer Gale's vehicle. I did get new estimates from Valco for outfitting that. They're all within range where they were going to be. One thing that was a little bit different was the camera system that we would need to get for the Dodge. We need a new camera system, including watch guard system. Twenty one, those are about four or five thousand. I talked with them last week. They went up twelve percent. And it's between five and six thousand dollars for that system now, which would be the main system that we're using in the office where video is going. The main system that's in the twenty twenty one and then this same system just to make things and then need to range up. I would have to order that soon. Also advised that they are probably only gonna have service for those for about five more years. And everybody is doing this. So every company, there are people that branched out from WatchGuard. WatchGuard was bought by Motorola. A lot of people left WatchGuard Motorola after the takeover because they weren't happy. And there are other companies that have branched off, Lens Lock, there's all these, you know, there's also they're all going server or cloud based. And you're not gonna get a system for five thousand dollars. WatchGuard is gonna be about seven thousand dollars a year. A year. And it's because we're gonna be paying for service to them to keep all of our video. Because they're just not selling systems where you can have it on your computer anymore.
Which is a difference between the, uh, the Ford and the Dodge, fully outfitted, ready for service.
They're comparable. It's just we can't get one.
Well, the only reason I ask is if we wanted to try to keep some continuity in the fleet. Um. If we if we try, we could do one or two, a couple of things, right? Um, sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money for a squad. I don't remember Squad One, the Tahoe costing that. I don't remember all the upgrades or all that. It's sixty grand. I thought it was, you know, the thirty nine thousand or thirty eight thousand for that.
Just a squad, but then you're talking another twenty thousand dollars to outfit it. So some other squads that we had, the Explorers mainly. Obviously, we're able to move equipment from one vehicle to the next as we went along.
But that was all blank, nothing fit, right?
Right. And so with Officer Gil's Tahoe. Because it's a two thousand eleven, he would need new equipment that's not going to just switch over.
New equipment.
Correct. And I do, I have the squads in the garage if the council and mayor want to entertain with taking. What down there? There are a couple of things I would just like to walk around them and show you some of the issues. Um, there's a safety concern that I guess I would like to point out in person for everybody to really understand. What's happening there.
With which vehicle?
With Officer Gale's. And then um, if also if Caleb's back. Then. Explorer is there as well.
So if if there's no guarantee on the Durango. And so that could turn out to be a twenty twenty four vehicle, which could still be acquired. Well, we don't, we don't, I mean. We don't, the Dodge could be the same.
Right. Concerned that number two is a two thousand seventeen. That's already pretty old for a squad car. Um, with office, and there are spots in it, the foot is chipped that are going to start rusty. Officer Gale's canine squad has a lot of rust on it. And. I haven't seen too many squads out there operating that have rust on them. Um, let's be honest.
Let's fix them.
What's that?
Let's fix them.
Yeah.
I mean, it's called maintenance.
Right. But the problem is the older they get, more operational problems. So number two went to Mule checks today, the Explorer. The two thousand seventeen for new brakes and tires, and so there's another bill for that. So I understand that there's a thinking that these squads can be kept for eight, twelve years. I personally don't think that that's realistic. I think a lot is happening with these vehicles, and they're they're not safe. There's a lot of wear and tear on them.
So. Those two.
Yes. Yes, I would like to purchase a twenty twenty three Durango. At least put it in order for us, see if we can get it.
And if if that's denied. Or unavailable, whatever you want to call it. Then. I mean, it's up to the council. It's up to you guys which ones.
Yeah.
The money is there. The money is there. Um, it's in a, it's in a packet. The money's there. Uh. Chief Kleinman has been budgeting monies. Um. Twenty five thousand is also budgeted again in twenty twenty three towards that acquisition. I believe the account right now is around sixty seven thousand dollars.
I actually just got dropped down to fifteen thousand. For next year. It was twenty five thousand.
Okay, I missed that. Okay. Um, and it was discussed that some money out of the canine account would go to outfit. The twenty twenty one Tahoe.
That is all, is all included with the price. There is a little bit of savings with Officer Gale's squad, three hundred dollars, three hundred dollars. If you take the decals off ourselves with the heat gun, which hey, I can do that, you know, save three hundred dollars.
So if the council.
Three hundred dollars to do that.
Yeah, if the councils wants to go ahead with that, I guess the only thing I would suggest is then if the if this squad. Um, doesn't go through, it's not able to be acquired, that um, then we revisit what options there are at that time.
Thank you.
I would move that we authorize. Officer Miller to order a Dodge Durango Pursuit. And um. Using funds that are currently. Department's budget.
Oh, second.
First seventy thousand. What is this? Amount?
What amount, Robin, that we need for this?
So. Seventy thousand. I mean, that's an estimate. Estimates I have from Valco. That doesn't include the watch guard, but that's gonna, we're going for ARPA funds for that. So there are seven thousand ARPA funds, and it's about five thousand for the watch guard camp. That is not.
So Heath, what do you suggest having in the motion? For a dollar mark?
You think it's wrong? The seventy thousand?
Yeah.
That, correct. And then there's also, and and I did check on, you know, E B and other things too. Um, Chief Kleinman had figured seven to ten thousand dollars for the sale of the two thousand eleven Tahoe. I was actually finding, I mean. There are other vehicles that are in better shape, obviously, but two thousand tens that were a whole five thousand dollars more than that. So, you know, I'm not, you know. Seven to ten, I'll be very happy with.
Seventy would be.
Would you like to amend your?
I amend the motion to authorize. To uh, order a. Rango pursuit. Seventy thousand dollars. Around the uh, place their funds.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
I never thought I'd. Seventy thousand dollars for. Police.
Please call roll.
Janita.
Janita?
Janita?
Roll.
Hi. Robin?
Hi.
Rich? Eric? John? Jim? Wendy?
Motion carried. Uh.
Be interested in some of the other photos. I actually got some better.
Nothing more glossy than that? Item I approve the transfer of funds from the removal for the removal of street trees.
It's received by court for all services for the removal of.
Thanks, Robin.
Um. Which includes the total of the ashtrays. Um, the proposal is a total of eleven thousand one twenty. Uh, currently, the public works, seven thousand. But. The money that's currently in the. Our forestry grant is to pay the whole thing, I mean, you're there three percent of the percent. But when down that money, that's what they're proposing to. Bring eleven thousand one twenty from salaries full time and their taxes. Part of fifty. As they have ability. Um.
Right, so just to be clear, uh, to satisfy that trees, then we would be entertaining a motion. For the purchase through fall rate. At eleven thousand one hundred twenty dollars, and those funds are going to come from the public works staff budget.
Yeah. When I got from the. Camera, that's seventy thousand. Fifty thousand dollars. And we're gonna. There should be thirty five thousand. Absolutely short people. So my idea was. That in the form of the contractual services. Out of this ash problem that we're gonna. Especially since right now we're occupied, so I would. Guys' thoughts on that with you.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna do my best to knock some off this list, this. Well, this isn't something I told them. I just wanted to see what your thoughts were before I moved forward, but. You know, exploring this out.
Just a quick question, what do you do if you burn the trees?
Oh, no. We're gonna ask you about what about. The fairy trees, that has to be.
That's probably just.
The ash trees, that's.
So they, they uh. Die with the trees there?
Well, the trees are already dying.
Right.
Yeah, they're in art of our energy.
Okay. That's why I was wondering, you know, if you burn it because. You're potentially gonna pass it on if it survives, so. Not like a coffee object, but.
You don't see the effects of that.
Not quite. Survive a nuke.
Okay. Okay. So when you.
So I'm looking for a motion to authorize uh, Public Works to contract fall rate. Uh. To take care of these trees, not to exceed eleven thousand one hundred twenty dollars, and those funds are coming from the staff budget, current budget. Any further discussion? Please call the.
Wendy?
Hi.
Um, Jim? John?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yep.
Rich? Robin?
Hi.
Janita?
Hi.
Can I ask Robin one?
Motion carried. Our assistant, current assistant chief, sure.
On the Durango?
Yeah.
I don't have the details.
Are they, are they typically standard? With what we would get on a, on the same civilian type vehicle, or are they shorter from what you recall? Okay. I'll just. Okay, then we'll move on. Item J, affirm the schedule of a public hearing for the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty three budget.
I mean, we are. Finance committee has been working with staff on this. That twice. Finalized project. Um. Advertising has to occur. Home budget tip. Um, again. Uh, other funds aren't necessarily constrained that way, and rest of such. Um, you know, fund budget is to. Public appearance that the. Tax rates. I gave you the. Um, parameter of the budget, I mean, package. Uh, with total revenues of three months, seven thousand one hundred seventy dollars and close. For advertising, collected in that page. Um, decided on this schedule of public hearings. The public hearing, the tax. Department of State, Edut, City, Public, City, past one, most. Days prior to the hearing date. Um. Recognizing also.
So I would make a motion that we. Twenty three. Now.
I will not be here. Just so, I mean, these other people are absent too.
That's the, that's after Thanksgiving? That's the final?
For ten days, so I will.
Well, I'm really sorry to hear that, John.
So. So I guess my question would be. Is office staff appreciated the fact we have a finance committee that. All of this and and. Figure it out. It was fun. It was fun.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion on the floor? If there is no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying I opposed, motion carried. All right, okay. Request to hire onward accounting and consulting L C to prepare a rate study for heightened rental fees.
Another that the hydro level things are currently doing.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, and in order to do this transfer, we need to do a rate study to send them to the public service. Um, we intend to have this. Study if we. Done. Um, so the budget has advertised. Partner question of that. There's no funds allowed to pay the first thousand of that. Thousand dollars fee. And the rest would come out of the water utility. Um. We're gonna have decent advertising if it. Come off, it's gonna come as a other. Cash to the. Utility bills. Uh, that we just made around. Thirty five dollars.
It's fifteen dollars for twenty twenty three, and it would be thirty dollars for every cycle.
Okay, so just to be clear on the, and the ask here, right now. All that we're looking for on this item is a six thousand dollars to be authorized to go into the pricing or to the rate study.
It's just important to understand why we need to do that.
Understood, understood, but I I also want everybody to be understanding that we're not voting to do that transfer. At this time, because there are a lot of things that need to be discussed, and it will have to be. Uh. Uh, well, advertising communicated to the public.
Record, here's an argument to get our letter. That hopefully it went to the tax bill. Um, to kind of explain why we're, you know, why this, why this additional fee is occurring and planning.
Well, and and quite possibly, could we not just consider doing half? To the water utility and half of the general fund?
Yeah, and that's where we are.
Initially, but isn't the second or third year supposed to be the entire month?
Fiscal twenty three, what we're doing is approximately half on the app.
Correct.
Not you. Program.
So just to be clear, because this is being discussed now, and with the millions of views that we get on our YouTube meetings, and we can get this aired out a little bit tonight. Um, so on an average, so on an average uh, property. We're looking at how many dollar increase per billing cycle?
For twenty twenty three, thirty dollars for twenty twenty four.
For court. We did the full.
Per billing cycle, that's six times.
Every two months.
We've already decided, I mean, that's already built into the twenty twenty three budget. The fifteen dollars is already built into the twenty twenty three budget, so. When you said that we're not actually doing it, well, we are actually doing it. Because if we don't do it, then our, then the budget's gonna be, not gonna have the.
So just to.
Budget's not gonna be correct.
That the two hundred sixty five thousand is going out of our general plan right now. Which is turning the budget upside down. So, correct? Okay.
But it also, so we know. You know, and maybe everyone researches quite a bit. Other municipalities are doing this. Not something that's supposed to be key one. This is something that's been accepted from other municipalities, not just town. And that's why we decided to, you want to get in front of this and drop that letter, explain. How we got here and why, and also. I believe the numbers were still lower than. That that makes.
Jo, Joanne's, Joanne's uh, honor. Did a great study, and she, her maximum of six thousand dollars, and she worked with Daniel. She's somebody who's gang, which. Helpful, which helpful because of all sorts of.
So another clarification, it 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 also is my understanding that this process of transferring from the general fund to that utility is a new. Thing. This hasn't been like. Years ago, you could have did it. This is a new, the P S C authorized it in the recent years, is what I'm trying to say.
I was the mayor, because we looked at it at that time.
So I just want people to understand that.
Yep, we could not do that at that time. I just have, just as long as everybody knows, it's gonna be a significant increase. People are gonna get.
Fifteen dollars per billing cycle per account.
That's a bad, we could. Money to actually.
Well, we don't have any money otherwise.
The nice thing is, you're getting off your tax free people also, so the people that don't pay tax is not aimed for the financial protection qualification. Open on the utility bill per.
So.
Every, every one. Everybody that you.
It's the same user fee for everyone. Doesn't make any difference what your usage is.
Correct. It's a fixed amount. Does everybody understand that? So we, uh, did you make a, you made a motion?
Um, I don't.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
But I would make a motion. Um. Uh, authorize that to be on an account with the public, the rate study regarding. That three C. Once back.
Any further discussion? Please call the.
Anita?
Hi.
Robin?
Hi.
Rich? Eric? John? Jim? Wendy?
L, affirm the. Closing of City Hall Clerk's Office at noon on Tuesday, November twenty ninth, and all day Wednesday, November thirtieth, for new software training. Do I have a motion? You discuss. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. M, financial reports, month ending September two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to print the financial reports with the with the noting that there's some recording issues happening with the water sewer departments. That the revenue is not being the money is in bank. Aware of the issue, Joanne is working on.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Announcements. Robin? What do you got for us?
Uh, the lighthouse, we're going to be selling merchandise at Fisk and the larder, if you want to stop buying. Or volunteer, yeah. Christmas, the market's going on this weekend, Friday, Saturday. Christmas parade is Friday at six thirty, so get your, get your get your float ready and get it in the parade. There are business owners, you need to do that, so
Figured as much.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other announcements? If not, I have a motion to adjourn. All favor? Uh, Janita and John. Motion carried.
That's what time.
Everybody's welcome to step back in the garage and take a tour with Robin and look at the bowling yard balcony.
Oh, wait, oh shit. I just got it. This has been, I just saw this. Where does it say stop life string?
If you right click in here.
Well, it says go back to meeting, we're here, end of meeting, more, more, so we're down here. How do I stop leaving?
YouTube pager, the Zoom.
I, yeah, it's not letting me. Yeah. It is, it's not letting me escape. Yeah, okay.